...dialogue with members of the audience. The opportunities for members of the public to provide input to the Board on non-agenda matters and items on the agenda is through the submittal of a timely public testimony request. The time periods for your speakers on each item are set by the Board as described in the Board bylaws and will be announced to the members of the public as each agenda item comes up for discussion by the Board. And we have Trustee Beiser calling in from afar.
Okay.
We will now hear the public testimony on non-agenda items. Per the Brown Act, public testimony on non-agenda items is not a conversation or dialogue with the Board. If an issue needs further attention, the Board may refer the matter to the Superintendent for review and/or investigation. Testimony on non-agenda items is limited to a maximum of 15 minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker and depending upon the total number of speakers' requests received, the time may be reduced to two or one minute. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics, not on today's agenda. If your topic is on the agenda, you'll be called to speak when we get to that subject matter item. Today, each non-agenda speaker will have up to three minutes. We have five plus one, six, six, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six plus two. So we'll have three minutes each to address the Board. Please remember, no deferral time is allowed. The Board asks that speakers focus their comments on the issues and not on the individuals. When you begin to speak, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. Lights are located directly in front of the podium, on the dais, next to Cheryl Ward, our Board Action Officer. Please finish your sentences when your time is up. I'm going to call the names of those who signed up to speak in advance first and then the speaker slips submitted this afternoon. If I call your name, please come down to the podium area and be ready to speak in the order that I call you. So starting with early submissions, William Burt, Citizen, Joanne Fields, Francine Maxwell, Anna Bonatati, Johnai Lee, then Denise Collier and Rosalva Puentes. So we'll start with William Burt.
Hi. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do this. I have the privilege of overseeing a homeschool ministry, a private satellite school that's been registered with the state of California since 1979. We have been helping students and families homeschool their students. Since then, we require records to be submitted, attendance records, grades. We do require certain curriculum, given times if they want to turn in course of study, if they deviate from our curriculum. We look through their course of study and make sure that all the A through G requirements are met. We do standardized testing. We pretty much do our best to follow everything that I know the school district follows. I bring this up because we haven't had a problem with students being accepted in the past. However, this year, we have had several students come to us that have tried to transfer out of our school into a San Diego Unified School District, and they have come back to us and said they're not taking any credits. So we have a couple seniors that are actually having to start all over again in ninth grade. And that seems to be a big problem for some of these families who are trying to transfer out. And I don't want to inhibit them from being able to transfer out, so I didn't know. I'm just bringing this to your attention and seeing if there's anything that could be done, maybe to the district policy of not accepting unaccredited school credits. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Citizen, then followed by Joanne Fields.
So on the television news, there was a story about schools police officer Bashar Abdi suing the three students, including the student that he used a taser on. And it reminded me that Superintendent Cinni Martin told the public that there was going to be an independent investigation into the actions of Schools Officer Bashar Abdi. And it was reported that the Sheriff's Department would do that inquiry or review of the school police officer's actions. And I would like to know if the Sheriff's Department has finished that review? And when is Superintendent Martin going to present the results of what that report says? I think it's very important to know what the actions were of Schools Officer Bashar Abdi that night. We have not been able to see the video, and I think that the public wants to know. This is an officer that has used a taser on teenagers twice, twice, and that's very disconcerting. I think that the public deserves to know what is happening with that complaint. I also filed a complaint, as I'm very concerned about the civil rights violations that I'm seeing by schools police, and I have still not received a response. According to what's posted on the school police website, a person that files a formal complaint against a school police officer should receive a written response, and I have not received it. I would like the Superintendent to look into that and find out why that's not being followed through. It is part of the state law and the penal code, and I still not received a response. I would like to know what Schools Officer Bashar Abdi did that night.
Thank you. Thank you, Citizen. Joanne Fields, followed by Francine Maxwell.
You're gonna do the Joanne, one, two, three?
Okay.
Joanne's not here? Okay. Francine Maxwell, there is a higher law than the law of government. That's the law of conscience. That's what Mr. Stoki Carmichael said. San Diego Unified is the second-largest school district, and I'm not understanding how you can stand for bullying, but you can not do anything about the conscious discrimination that is taking place in San Diego Unified on the leadership panel. There is only one, at the most maybe two diverse people. For the second-largest school district, your leadership team should mirror the children and the families that you serve. I'm not gonna use the language that I read in a recent District Deeds article about some mafia, but as I continued to read the article, there was some valid points. If we serve the children of San Diego with all the diverseness, then the leadership panel, instructional, executive directors, I think you may have two area supes, or three of diverse culture, but the leadership panel should definitely mirror it. I'm truly concerned with the lack of partnership that has been shown by the school district for your blueprint. You own it. It's the blueprint to accelerate the achievement of African-American and African students. So how can people relate when there's nobody that looks like them here on Normal Street in a six-figure job? My concern is that we have been going round and round with your blueprint, and not too many things have been taken care of, so maybe we're gonna move in a new direction and have a diversity coalition. I'm requesting that you make that public, and a diversity coalition would mean that everybody is included. So if you're gonna do away with the AAAE meetings about your blueprint, then you should be doing away with the LGBTQ meetings, the Latino advisory, you should be doing away with everybody, because we all fold into one diversity coalition. As I stated as we began our school year 2016, 2017, we should not repeat some of the same mistakes that we've made for over 15 years. As we begin to build trust and transparency, secret meetings are never really secret. Rather, you flag the email for confidentiality or not. So once again, I want you to understand that the public is watching you. And you may be able to gain a couple things, but once you try to do something in secret, it just blows all the good that we've gained since we began this school year. So I want to make it clear that this Board stands, you do not stand for bullying, you do not tolerate different things, but you'll sit still for this.
Thank you, Francine. So is Joanne Fields not here? Anna, Bonatati?
Hi, Anna Bonatati. I'm an ELD teacher at Clark Middle School in International Centers. I've been here before speaking about my concerns for English learners. I've been an advocate for years, and I implore you to reconsider the current International Centers model. In our, parents are not happy with it to begin with, and I was on the committee that was making suggestions on what should be included in this new model. And the things that we teachers suggested were disregarded. What I can tell you, being the ELD teacher in the International Center classroom, is that that paper I'm passing around to you, or that's being passed out, has the kinds of writing systems that our students come to us with. So the student that comes from Mexico, or Central or South America, or Europe, that has a Romanized alphabet and can come in and sit in a math class, or sit in a science class, and at least decode the words. But as you look at those scripts, there's no way you could sit and stare at that for days and never understand what it says, and that's what our students are dealing with. And the kids that come from the camps, you don't even know if they've really had schooling, how long it's been. They're going into the regular math classes right now, and they have no idea what's going on. The teacher's acting as a facilitator so that they can, you know, struggle and figure out what's going on. They can't even read the numbers. Before, they were in a self-contained math class, learning foundational skills, learning phonics that goes with our alphabet. Right now, they're lost. And I can tell you that in my class, in the new Arrival Center when I was at San Diego High, we had 25 students. In my class now, I have 30 students, 10 of which are SIF. How? Tell me, how can we teach these kids? I spent with the African kids that have never seen a computer. I'd get them on the computer, turn around, she'd come back up to the class. She had opened all these windows and didn't know what she was doing. She couldn't read it anyways. The Syrian kids look at the keyboard, they don't know what to do with it. It's a different alphabet. Whoever really conceived of this idea to include these students didn't consider all of the populations that we deal with. I'm sure a well-educated Spanish speaker coming from Mexico will survive. They'll be fine. They'll catch up with it all. But the kid from Syria that's coming from a war-torn area and has an Arabic alphabet? No way. Or the little girl from Burma who speaks Corin, took her three years to get past an AA level because nobody probably realized her alphabet was completely different.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Johnai Lee?
Hi, I'm Janai Lee and from Bernard Elementary School. And I wanted to bring it to the Board's attention that we have, I'm sure we're not the only school in San Diego, especially since we're very close to the ocean, but we have an extreme heat issue. And I went, got some great advice from some people over the phone, went on the San Diego Unified School District website to find out who qualifies for an early dismissal in San Diego Unified School District. And I was kind of surprised to find our school on the mostly air-conditioned classroom side of the list, because my child's school, you know, classroom doesn't have air conditioning. But I did notice the administration building had air conditioning, which I thought was very ironic, because I feel that adults are able to concentrate, I mean, nobody likes to be in an 85-degree office environment, but they can understand and concentrate a little bit better than 25-year-olds that are expected to concentrate in a classroom that was over 90 degrees yesterday. I think this is a travesty. I understand this policy was only adopted a couple years ago, and it's very puzzling to me. So I did a little research on my own to find out, well, heat policies have to be going on in other school districts. How do they handle it? And could we somehow modify ours to be a little bit more reasonable, since nobody thinks that anybody in Pacific Beach or that area needs air conditioning, even though I live right near the school, and my temperature reading yesterday was 103 at my house. So I went on Coronado's website. I figured Coronado has actually closer proximity to the ocean. Coronado Unified School District, not only yesterday, but a couple times already this year, has had an early dismissal of 1230. And that's whenever it's a heat advisor. And I thought, you know what? That's common sense. Why, maybe I can bring that to the Board's attention. And I noticed their superintendent posted the night before at 7:00 PM, so that it gives parents plenty of time to make arrangements for childcare and whatnot. And they go by the National Weather Service. So I am inquiring to the Board to find out who makes that call and what website or service do they use to make that call? And to bring it to everybody's attention that maybe 95 degrees with a heat index of 103 two days in a row is not a good idea. And the reason I say it's not a good idea is there was over 30 kids in our health department yesterday in our school. Six were sent home due to heat-related problems. So I really think the Board needs to readdress this. Whoever voted it in two years ago maybe needs to come to our classroom and work in a 90-degree environment. Thank you.
Dennis, or Denise Collier? On school safety? Okay. Followed by Rosalva Puentes? Denise?
Good afternoon, Board of Education. I'm here on behalf of concerned parents in the San Diego Unified District in regards to day-to-day safety or lack thereof. On Tuesday, September 13th, my four-year-old daughter's safety was put in jeopardy when a side gate was left open and unlocked. She was excused to the restroom with another TK student but did not return to her science prep class with the other student. The timeline is still unclear at this point, but the best estimation I have pieced together from voicemails and when science lab starts is about 40 minutes it took for the school to be aware that she was missing and had never returned to her science lab classroom. It took the school almost two hours to contact me and an additional one to two hours to contact her father. The police department was not contacted immediately by the school either. The lack of proper safety procedures in place is where this school, and I'm sure many others in the district, fall short. One would think that common sense would come into play when excusing two students from a classroom, two TK students. Two students should also return, but the simple fact is that we should never rely on each individual to acting kind. Which leads me to how imperative it is for there to be a district-wide safety procedure that addresses specifically what is expected of each San Diego Unified employee, as well as what due diligence needs to be followed in a breach of safety event like the one that occurred with my daughter. In preparing for this meeting, I have researched the district's website to find any information directly related to safety procedures, but could not locate any document, with the exception of a school lockdown procedure, which of course pertains to school shootings and major safety issues that affect the entire student body simultaneously. This needs to change immediately. We interest you with the most important treasure we have in our lives, our children, our future, and we demand for our children to be safe. A district-wide policy and procedure would ensure that each and every school has the same safety measures in place and would give all San Diego Unified parents the peace of mind we deserve when sending our children to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Rosalva Puentes?
Good afternoon, Rosalva Puentes. I'm the parent of four students in the San Diego Unified School District, two of which attend Lindbergh Swizer Elementary School. I am here today to voice my concern and the concern of several parents, which cannot attend today's forum meeting due to the short notice. We found out today that Lindbergh is gonna be letting go of one of its teachers due to its low enrollment. It is also my understanding that we're not talking about big numbers. We're talking about maybe three students. So for three students that deny enrollment at Lindbergh, one of its teachers is gonna be let go. And in particular, it looks like it's gonna be the fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Young, which is an excellent teacher, and my seventh grader had her, and my fifth grader now has her. I ask you to look at, is it reasonable to let go of one teacher and affect 100 students or more in reshuffling of classes, making combos, making parents upset, and adding more work to the principal due to the low enrollment of perhaps just three students? I also want to read you an email from one of the parents that wasn't able to make it today. She says, "I want my voice heard, that if Mrs. Young is dismissed from Lindbergh, this would be the worst mistake ever, and this school has come a long way from its prior mistakes with staffing at the school. Just because the school is short, quote, 'three students,' her dismissal would have huge impact on her students and students in all the other classes. Not to mention more work for the principal. We'll have to create more combo classes, and then we'll have to handle complaints from parents, including myself, who don't want their child in those types of classrooms. In fact, I would be more happy to suggest a few other teachers. I appreciate Mrs. Young's teaching style. She's strong in all subjects. She makes time for great art projects. She completely relates to my child, who has ADHD, and all the children in her class. She's a gamer. She's into pop culture, but she knows how to keep the children focused and engaged, and for my child, that is critical. She is awesome. If Mrs. Young is dismissed, it will be a great loss not only to my children and education, but to all the students at Lindbergh Swizer." So with this, I ask you to reconsider and think, and work with Lindbergh Swizer so that they can maintain the current staff and keep providing education, great education to our students, including my kindergarten, who attends right now, and my fifth grader. Thank you.
So this completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. We'll also hear a non-agenda public testimony at the end of the meeting for those that weren't here, like we had one speaker not show. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the Board and the Superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives do help us serve our students and parents and the community. I would like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the September 27, 2016, regular meeting to order, and all Board members present except for Member Beiser, who is participating in today's meeting via teleconference. Trustee Beiser, are you hearing us and ready for today's September 27 regular meeting?
Thank you.
Good, like we heard that.
I did hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Marine Corps JRO TC Color Guard from University City High School will now present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the color. Begin.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Please be seated. If you wish to address the Board on any of the agenda items before the Board today and your name is not on the speaker list printed on the blue papers that are located at both entrances to the auditorium, and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Cheryl Ward, our Board Action Officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the Board. Board Bylaw 1025 provides that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending upon the total number of speakers' requests received by the Board on an item, that item may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 PM today and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. So we'll now hear from Item B3, the student presentation from the University City High School Marching Band. The students will perform two songs. And Trustee, Shani Evans, you wanna do some?
Yes, we have a small portion of the UC High marching band today. They were up bright and early on the first day of school on all of the TV stations, and they're here today with the music director, Brandon, excuse me, Brandon Corman, and Principal Jeff Olivero. Come on in.
Just so you know, last year they got selected to compete in the state championships, where they took six overall in the entire state.
Pretty impressive despite the SC fight song. We'll kind of let that one go for now.
All right, moving along in the agenda, C1. I'd like a motion to adopt today's agenda with Section I, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Item G2, the proclamation honoring and recognizing Maya Salama. Item G1, the report on 2015-16 evaluation, Superintendent of Public Instruction. And then Item E1, focus and goals of initiatives for 2016-17 school year, to be considered immediately following the adoption of the agenda and acted on next in the order I just described. The board has a special invited guest and her family here, and we want to acknowledge a national award of one of our students who has recently received. In addition, while chronologically on the agenda, board member items following the student instructional matters today, we want to report on the Superintendent's 2015-16 Evaluation, Item G1, prior to the Superintendent's Report on 2016. I, Focus Goals and Initiatives, Item E1. Is there a motion?
Certainly.
And a second discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment.
Your item on the consent agenda, I, will come later.
Okay.
All right, that'll be the next one. So just adopting the agenda as is, then we move to that. Cast your vote. Thank you, trustee. All right, and then we have, did I push? No, I didn't vote against my own agenda.
I vote yes. Can somebody hit my green button?
There we go. Okay, got it. Thank you. We'll have, all right. I have slightly moved over to the right. Kinetic memory. Good, it passes unanimously. So now we're moving, does board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Yes, which one?
F3.
Which one?
F, right, 3?
He's looking at the I.
I. So we're okay on I, so when we come up to F3, that'll roll up when we get to the agenda item for F. Okay, so.
I'll move the consent agenda.
So the consent agenda is being moved.
Second, all second, Richard's motion.
We got your second. All in favor, cast your vote.
I vote aye, yes. Somebody hit my green button, please.
It has been.
Laura's got your back, Kevin.
Thank you, Richard.
No, no, it's Laura, it's our ASP. So that has passed unanimously. We got that so recorded? So what happened to, if you wanted to comp about?
Well, we just go to G2. We're not at F.
We're not there yet. So moving on with the agenda in order of the revised agenda, G2. We'll now hear Item G2, the proclamation recognizing San Diego's high school student, Maya Salama, on being named the 2016 National Student Poet. She is a student poet laureate for the United States of America. It is quite an honor, and she's one of five, and I think we have some more comments?
Maya, would you please join me at the podium? So Maya, we're extremely honored to have you here tonight, and we're so proud of what you've been able to do to have San Diego recognized nationally, and we'll talk more in a little bit, but first I'm going to just read you a proclamation here. So this is a proclamation honoring and recognizing Maya Salameh, our 2016 National Student Poet. Whereas Maya Salameh is a junior at the San Diego High School of International Studies, where her friendliness, respect for all, and dedication to human rights and the underserved have aided considerably in the development of a restorative campus. And whereas she will be the first student to complete both an international baccalaureate and an advanced placement capstone diploma. Wow. And whereas Maya's leadership through creative expression has allowed student voices and contributions to be heard via her founding of and presidency of the Psychology Club and the co-presidency of the Model United Nations Club. And whereas Maya is one of five students chosen as a 2016 National Student Poet, a program created five years ago by President Obama's administration to honor student poets from five areas of the country. And whereas the recipients recite poetry at a White House reception, followed by a year of service as a literary ambassador, which includes attending poetry classes, art festivals, and doing community service projects. And whereas Maya embodies the program's goals, to inspire other young people to achieve excellence in their own creative endeavors, and to promote the essential role of writing and the arts in academic and personal success. And whereas the oldest daughter of Lebanese-Americans, and Maya's parents and family are here with Whereas the oldest daughter of Lebanese-Americans, Maya's poems discuss the complexities of being Arab-American and the effects of political violence. And whereas although Maya has not yet decided on a community service project, she would like to focus on immigrants, especially immigrant girls. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education commends Maya Salameh for receiving this national honor and recognizes her creativity and talent. Thank you, Maya. We'll do a little bit more, and then we'll have you speak. Are we going to have Maya address this now?
Sure, absolutely, thank you. Well, thank you very much for this honor. I'm so happy to have been given the opportunity to represent our city, which I love very much. I was born in San Diego, and I love that it's a cultural melting pot, and that we're so diverse and accepting of everybody, and I just, I hope I can inspire other young artists, be it poets, or drawers, or writers. I hope I can bring out more youth voices like mine. Thank you.
And I think we'll pass the motion, and then we might ask Maya to stay for just one second.
Sure. So do we have any other speakers on this agenda item?
We do not.
Thank you. So it's a motion?
Certainly.
Second?
Certainly.
Discussion? Cast your vote, and we have our student passing for.
Is that an aye, Kevin?
Aye.
That's the green button.
So Maya, we would be honored if you would read one of your poems for us.
I'd love to. I hope you guys don't mind me reading it off of my phone, I didn't have it printed out. Okay. So the poem I'm going to read is called "Sacrelage Incorporated," and I read it at the White House. I speak to you, terrorists, skyjackers, lifejackers, and otherwise flavored peddlers of sacred hearsay. I speak to you, just FYI, just for your illumination, God is not a McDonald's franchise. You hold no right to sell, market, or otherwise operate in his name. I speak to you, for now is the time to open your eyes, to close your pocketbooks. No prophets have ever had Swiss bank accounts. I speak to you, for if you love God, you would not lie in his name. You would not kill in his name. You would not explode in his name. I speak to you, for the only God you seem to know is the God of destruction, always thirsty for more blood, more tears, more futures gone wrong. I speak to you, for children belong to no creed, and if holiness exists, it is the selflessness that runs in their veins. I speak to you, because the magnetic attraction of violence keeps no home in the non-polar hearts of the young. I speak to you, because senseless violence has no part in my definition of humanity. I speak to you, for blind faith is no faith. Thank you.
So could we have Maya's family, parents, stand up and be recognized? I hope we've done that, so thank you so much.
Can I speak?
Sure. Thank you. I understand there's also, it wasn't just one person or five people, there were thousands of applicants. Was it, am I right, thirty some?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand applicants, of that they chose five. So it's an incredibly competitive, and the best was selected. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Walid Bill Salameh. I'm Maya's father, and I want to express my appreciation to the board for understanding and nurturing young talent such as our daughter. We have three children in your system, and they were in the language academy first, and then they graduated to IS. And Anthony is still our youngest in the language academy. We are very happy that Maya is a child of this system. She grew up in the system. She absorbed the values of diversity and tolerance that this system proclaims. And I want to thank you. You thanked us, we also would like to thank you for ingesting and imbibing these values in your students. I also want to put in a word here for International Studies High School, which has been in the news for a very long time in the last few weeks. We hold very dear to the school, to its existence and to its continuity. And we want to put this at your doorstep to this evening, to realize that Maya is a product of this high school, and to keep it going, to maintain its existence, hopefully in its current location or very close to its current location. Thank you very much.
And just one other point, we just had a very brief discussion with Maya before the board meeting. As part of Maya's responsibility as a national student poet, she needs to design and carry out a community service project. And Maya has an interest in a community service project that would focus on students, on immigrant students, on students from all backgrounds, to get out and do workshops, where we look at a broad, you know, diversity of forms of art that can engage students. So we began a discussion about how, at the district and in the community, we can be at Maya's service as she helps put her community service project together to benefit our community. And Maya has expressed that her intention is not just to do a project that would, you know, take place and that'd be it, but a project that would go forward and provide a lasting legacy. And so we, I know Superintendent Martin and Dr. Garcia, and I know everybody in this community is going to be interested in working with you and helping you to carry that out. So thank you, Maya.
So thank you, Maya. Congratulations on the honor and the receipt of the award, and you do represent us extremely well, and we look forward to the product that you create and the committee and the activities that come from this effort. The board will now present Item G1.
Quick picture.
Oh yeah, photo one.
Photo one.
And Principal Carmen Garcia as well?
Please.
Board will now present Item G1, the report on the 2015-16 evaluation of Superintendent of Public Education of San Diego Unified Schools. I think we have trustee White-Herst paying you. Have a statement?
Good evening, good evening, everyone. This is a report on 2015-16.
Is your speaker on?
The 2015-16 evaluation of the Superintendent of Public Education. Being Superintendent of the San Diego Unified School District is a massive responsibility. Our 175 schools serve over 100,000 students who come from more than 180 countries and speak more than 60 different languages. We also have an annual budget of more than $1.4 billion. Over the past two months, at multiple meetings, the Board of Trustees has heard from members of the public and directly from the Superintendent on how she has managed this awesome responsibility to care for the future of our children. Based on that analysis, I am pleased to say our evaluation of the Superintendent's performance was overwhelmingly positive. Though she is a tireless worker, we did not award the Superintendent extra credit for effort. We evaluated her work based strictly on the results she achieved for our students and families. Those results are, simply put, remarkable. Our evaluation of the Superintendent was based on the performance of our schools and our district. The evaluation of the Superintendent and the district are synonymous. First, let me stress that our analysis was based on the numbers, and based on these numbers, we can say that San Diego- on these numbers, we can say that San Diego Unified reached some key milestones in 2015-16. San Diego Unified is on track to achieve the highest graduation rate of any large urban district in the state of California, 92 percent. The fact that these results were achieved at the same time as we raised standards is all the more impressive. It is also a reflection of the confidence our superintendent has in the children of San Diego. She believes in their abilities with all her heart, and that is why she supports their success with all her heart. As the representative of many communities that have historically been underserved by the school district, I want to draw special attention to the on-track-to-graduate rate for African-American students last year, 91 percent. Not only are we approaching parity in our graduation rates, but the recent S-Back scores showed dramatic progress, some of the best in the state among our African-American and Latino students. In fact, overall, our students achieved the highest scores of any large district in English and finished second in math. My colleagues asked me to draft our evaluation summary, because I represent the kinds of challenging schools where Superintendent Martin first made her mark as a principal. The board saw what she was able to achieve for children in that community and believed in her ability to take that work to scale. That is exactly what Cindy Martin has done. As I mentioned, our evaluation was based on results. So let me review some of the results our district has achieved under this superintendent. More children are graduating, and their diplomas mean more than before. We implemented the A to G curriculum to give all students access to challenging coursework. Our students have increased access to a broad curriculum with computers for every student and arts and music programs in every school. Cultural proficiency is now firmly embedded in the district. We have amazing partnerships with Equal Opportunity Schools and the National Equity Project. World-class leaders like Pedro Neguera are working with our district to advance this work. Our focus on language instruction and offering students credit for speaking languages other than English has cut the number of long-term English learners dramatically. Our gifted and talented education program has been entirely reimagined with an emphasis on equity, including new gate classes in new communities. We focused on teacher retention and teacher diversity, including the hiring of the most diverse group of new teachers in years. To support these teachers, we've created a professional team to support Common Core instruction. We've improved the school climate by working to reduce bullying and creating the first online bullying reporting forum. And our schools are in better physical condition, with 96 percent of them rated as either good or better. These are big achievements, but Cindy Martin's motto is to dream big. She has set even more ambitious goals for the future. The superintendent is focused on increasing enrollment in our schools, putting the public on notice that great things are happening in San Diego schools. Last month, we opened a new enrollment and welcome center for families. And next month, the superintendent will be on a speaking tour at some of our schools to answer questions from prospective student families. Equally important, the superintendent has opened our schools to thousands of families who were previously shut out, working families who did not qualify for free preschool under state income guidelines. The new pre-K for all initiative the superintendent has launched is a relief for families who can finally afford quality preschool, and it is an important step in closing the achievement gap. We know early childhood education is the key to helping all children get the vocabulary and literacy skills they need to succeed in school. And as a former literacy teacher who literally wrote the book on teaching literacy, Cindy Martin has made the elimination of illiteracy her highest goal. This district has pledged to have 100 percent of our children reading at grade level in third grade, and I could not be prouder of that commitment. As we consider how far we have to go to achieve these big goals, it is important to remember how far we have come. The class of 2020 has just entered high school. Think of how different these high schools are than the high schools we operated when our Vision 2020 agenda was passed seven years ago. Thanks to Superintendent Martin, our schools now have the systems in place to ensure the success of our students. We track every child in the system with individualized lesson plans to make sure all boys and girls get what they need, when they need it, in the way that they need it. This focus on student achievement means we are providing more AP classes, more IB programs, more career and college readiness courses, online learning centers, community college classes, new athletic opportunities, state-of-the-art athletic facilities, and most importantly for me, our students, our families, for the board and for our city, our progress is irreversible. All of these changes are sustainable, because we have the will and the systems in place to keep moving forward. Superintendent Martin has balanced the books and given the board a disciplined budget every year in office. As a former teacher, she understands our professional educators and classified employees are the key to our continued success. So she has created an innovative teacher pipeline plan, creating teacher-career pathways in our schools and at local colleges. She has created a vehicle for student voices to be heard through the New Student Equity Committee, for parents to be heard through the new cabinet-level Office of Family Engagement, for the community to be heard through an LCAT process that respects the experiences everyone brings to the process. For all these reasons, this board is awarding Cindy Martin an A for her work as superintendent. We are grateful for her leadership and inspired by her vision for the future of our children. Thank you very much.
Other comments, board members? Trustee Evans?
Sure. Well, Dr. Whitehurst Payne certainly outlined a lot of the progress and the results that we've seen in the last few years. And as she said, this evaluation was really based, was not just a personal evaluation, it was based on the results of what the district has been able to do. And I really believe that in 2015-16, the prior school year, that this district has really turned a corner in terms of the progress we are making. I think in her first few years in the position, she has put all the systems and the people and the programs in place that are really going to allow us to succeed and accelerate very much more, I think particularly in the next four years. As was mentioned, the class of 2020 is now entering high school. They were in first grade when we first started talking about Vision 2020. So one of the things I am going to propose that we put on the next agenda to really show very clearly our support for the superintendent, our appreciation for what she's doing, and for the benefit of our district, is to extend her contract an additional two years. Currently, her contract is until 2018. But I would like us to be able to extend it till 2020 so she can carry out the full commitment to the year 2020 and certainly probably beyond that. But I think that's a commitment we can make. We're really on a path. Progress in our schools is not a sprint, it's a marathon. And Superintendent Martin has had the patience to carefully develop programs, run pilot programs, and set all the systems and structures in place so that we really can succeed. So that will be for a future agenda at our next meeting, but I think it's important to underscore that at this point. So thank you very much for all of your good work.
Vice President Barrera?
Well, I certainly support the proposal from Dr. Evans. And I would just add that the approach that Cindy Martin and her leadership team have taken, in a lot of ways flies in the face of what is often advanced as an education reform agenda. Often, we see folks, many of whom never spend time in our schools, promote an agenda of quick fixes, magic bullets, one-size-fits-all strategies that are supposed to somehow transform public education. And from the time that we've known Cindy Martin, you know, in her work as first principal at Central Elementary School, Cindy has never waited for Superman. Cindy has approached making our schools better and creating opportunities for young people, I think with three core principles. One is to be completely open and transparent about what our challenges are. I think there are people who either have a tendency to use data, as Cindy talks often about, as a hammer, whereas Cindy looks at data as a spotlight to tell us where we need to get. But she doesn't hide from the challenges. And, you know, the work that we've talked about over the last few years, that she's brought forward to this board with her leadership team, to talk in full, transparent, specific numbers about the challenges that we're facing with long-term English learners, the challenges that we're facing with students who are not prepared by the time they come to school in the early grades, challenges facing students to graduate in a meaningful way from high school. These challenges Superintendent Martin has put in front of us, used data as a flashlight, and then engaged all of us, our entire community, to come together around solutions. And the solutions have also followed a couple of key principles. One is a commitment to building capacity. So rather than, you know, looking to catch educators who are failing, and we've heard a lot about that from so-called education reformers, Cindy and her team have focused on how do we all come together so that all of us can get better at what we do, no matter where we're at at a current point in time? How do we all grow so that we, you know, we're better and better and educators are stronger in their profession and their ability to create opportunities for students? And it's not surprising that a superintendent and a leadership team who have all begun their careers as teachers in the classroom, who many of whom have extended to become leaders of schools, would say the way that we get better, the way that we do better for our kids is to build our capacity so that we can become better educators. And there's been a systemic approach, as John said, to put structures in place to allow us to get better at what we do. And finally, there's a principle around equity, a commitment that the way that we're going to judge our success as an entire district depends on, are we taking away the barriers that have gotten in the way of students who have traditionally been left out, whether it's because of race, because of ethnicity, because of students being gay, or students being women, or students facing disabilities? The point that Cindy has brought is that none of these issues need to remain the kind of barriers that they have existed for generations. And once we lift those barriers, immigration status, as Maya has, you know, brought attention to us tonight, once we lift those barriers, our students are capable of doing anything. But our district has to be committed to lifting those barriers and to invest in equity. So these principles of transparency and accountability, building capacity, and a focus on equity are what guide not only Cindy's work, but what Cindy's leadership has brought. So it guides all the work that we do in this district. And I do believe, as Dr. Whitehurst Payne mentioned in her statement, I do believe this progress is irreversible because of those principles and because of the structures that are being put in place.
Thank you. Trustee Weiser, do you have a comment? Did we lose Kevin?
I, I, thank you, President Macquarie. When I, when I need to comment, I have to log back into my phone because it times out. I'd like to just say thank you so much to Superintendent Cindy Martin and the team that she's built to create systems to support student learning at all levels, especially her focus on ensuring that K3 grades focus on literacy through making sure that all children are involved in learning how to read and focusing on the whole child. Her work helping us to accomplish record graduation rates while having increased graduation requirements is in and of itself a remarkable accomplishment, only achievable with the leadership of Cindy Martin and all the different teachers, counselors, and administrators that were all a part of that, especially the hard work of the students and the parents that supported those children. I think Trustee Barrera said it very well, that it's a system that which looks through the lens of equity, try to establish a school system that is making a difference in the lives of so many children. So thank you very much, Cindy Martin, for your past efforts, and we look forward to another great year ahead.
Thank you, Trustee Weiser. Everything's been said. What an incredible series of accomplishments. You came on as superintendent after being principal, and I believe you helped set the Vision 2020 as it was being created many, many years ago. And then the board knew that we had a vision, we had a mission, and now we needed someone to take charge. And that's when you were, you were offered the position at a 5-0, when unanimous board decision to bring you forward to be the superintendent, to establish the leadership and the team that would bring the vision and the mission to fruition. We are well on our way in accomplishing Vision 2020, which was, which was an incredible vision. And I remember looking at the vision as I was considering becoming a member of the school board and being amazed at how comprehensive it was, how, and the high bar that it had set for this very, very large school district. You have to remember, we're 130,000 students with 200 schools, 16 major high schools, 17, 16,000 employees, 6,000 teachers. It's, someone compared it to a battleship, but it really is more like a fleet. And with, with everybody moving in multiple directions, aligned on a single mission, and we had a goal to accomplish, and you were able to pull together a team to make, to make that happen. So I do want to acknowledge the team as well. And identifying school leaders who were instructional leaders, who understood the instructional process, who knew what good teaching looked like, who were in classrooms, working with teachers, working with students, was essential to be able to gain the graduation rates that we have. So yes, we did set higher standards, and we asked much for our students. And the class of 2016 came forward, and they achieved the record graduation rate. of 2016 came forward and they achieved the record graduation rates. And I guess we'll get confirmation of that in the next, next couple, couple of months. As I travel throughout the state and attend meetings in the nation, I meet with principals and superintendents and other instructional leaders. They are so amazed with the progress that we are making here in San Diego. People are paying attention and wanting to hear, what did we do? How did we do it? And, and what can, what are the best practices that we, that we can share? So we are not only meeting the goal and the vision that we've set, but we're also becoming a, receiving attention by others who want to follow in, in our pathway. And so I, I too acknowledge the great work that you've done, the incredible team that you've put together, and the work that our teachers and our school staff and our district staff do to support that team. In addition, I want to thank the, and acknowledge the, your work that you've done in bringing community partners and parents into the picture. I remember listening to the issues and concerns three years ago. It was about communication, about transparency, about accountability, and there was a real need in order to bring, to take, take a look at those, those critical areas. And we are doing that, and as we do that, we do achieve the results that we set. Congratulations. Nice job.
Thank you.
So is that an information item? Oh, there is no, no word action. Cool. Nice job. So now we move on to E1. Focus of Goals. We'll now have a presentation on focus and goals initiatives for the 2016-17 school year. Superintendent Martin presenting the item.
Thank you. So thank you for all the comments and the evaluation of 1516. Now let's get on to 1617, because we've got work to do. The summary of what we've accomplished up until now helps us set forth where we're going in the year ahead. So what I'd like to do now is focus on 1617 school year, looking back at some of the results that, I'm not going to go through each side, but we had seen, looking at our school climate data, looking at different results that Dr. Whitehurst Payne just summarized in her presentation. This PowerPoint reflects back on how we, where we've been. And what I can say is that we are making growth. Each one of these shows in certain areas where we're making growth, whether it's caring relationships or high expectations. Sometimes it's not as much as we would like, and there is certainly much more work to be done. And the school climate data is somewhat new. That's not something that we've looked at both locally, as a state, and as a nation. Under No Child Left Behind, we look specifically at academic achievement results, and we're in a new day where we're looking at more than just student test scores. You've heard me say very often that a child is more than a test score, and that we want to look at the whole and complete child, and we want to make sure that our school environments are worthy of our students. And we talk about academic, social, and physical environments. So the first few slides in this presentation looked at our California Healthy Kids Survey, looking at kinds of experiences our children are having, and what are the adults perceiving, and what are students perceiving? We want to continue to pay attention to that data because it actually matters quite a bit. The Sback results, as Dr. Whitehurst Payne said, we are showing achievement in those results as well. We're looking at, overall, this is by grade level, English Language Arts and Mathematics, and we have it broken down by subgroup. Specifically, you can see the African-American subgroup there, 33 percentage, 33% of the students met or exceeded standards in this 2015 administration of the Sback, and 40% of the students in the 2016 achievement. Same thing with Latino. What we're looking for is in subgroup population, are we seeing a greater increase in student achievement in the subgroups? Because that's really how the achievement gap is closed. And then again, in mathematics and English Language Arts, now broken, broken down by these subgroups, and then again, in mathematics. So we have metrics. We have data points that we're going to use. We will continue to use the metrics and the data points, as you said, as a flashlight or a spotlight telling us what's working, what's not working, where do we need to make adjustments? And these are just some highlight slides of where we've been. Now where we need to go, considering student, the fitness gram, again, looking at the whole child. Let's look forward now to 1617 school year. And our goals, the goals that you just reported on for 1516 came from the LCAP. As you said, my evaluation is synonymous with the evaluation of the district. And as we plan for going forward, the LCAP was already written, and we worked a whole year on writing the LCAP with community input in our process. And now what I'm going to go over tonight is the highlights of what we hope to accomplish in the 1617 school year. It's not everything. The LCAP has all of the goals in it, but these areas that I'll be highlighting tonight in each of our six LCAP goal areas are the goal areas that were of particular interest when I was in dialogue with, with the board around what areas you want to work on in each of these goals. So we decided as a district several years ago that quality schools in every neighborhood, Vision 2020, was going to be based on more than just the API score. And we asked ourselves this question, and that's what Dr. Macquarie was saying, you think I was, I was around when that was developed? I was a principal during that time. And we said, we know that schools are more than the API score, but if they're more than that, what is, what, what makes a great school? What keeps student, students engaged? What makes our families choose our schools and stay in our schools? What makes our students inspired as learners? And we asked that question, and we came up with back then 12 quality school indicators. And since then, after that happened, the state came up with a new funding formula and asked that we had eight state priorities, and we identified our local goals in the, in the local accountability plan. So our goals for this year took our 12 quality school indicators, and we really have six key areas of focus. And the six key areas that we focus on are the areas in which we're going to do our goal work. So we, we believe that a quality school in every neighborhood, number one, is a school that offers, is a school that closes the achievement gap. Closing the achievement gap is clear and important as a key area for a large urban district like ours. We believe in offering a broad and challenging curriculum. We believe in quality teaching and learning for all students. We believe that we have to make sure that we have school climates with positive school climate equity at the core, that there's parent and community engagement, and there's coordinated district services. So I'm going to go over each of those six goal areas, beginning first with closing the achievement gap with high expectations for all, and you'll see some of the key focus areas. One of the things for this year we'd like to look at is, as you said, we raised our, our graduation standards and raised our graduation rate. We want to look this year at the A-through-G requirement, that is currently one of our, is currently our graduation requirement. We want to look at the students who are achieving C or better, and start to pull the metrics and start, we just want to monitor that data point and say, okay, we have A-through-G for all, we've, we've solved the access problem, we have master schedules that are built across the district, so we are offering it. Now how are students doing? And although the, the policy is the D, to D or being able to achieve a D, we want to look at how many of our students are getting C or better. So we're going to start monitoring that this year. And on the, I also want to look at, in the past, we were monitoring on track to graduate starting in 10th grade. This year, we want to look at it in 9th grade. So if we're going to achieve this goal area of closing the achievement gap, these are specific areas of focus that are important. Of course, clear multiple measures, as Trustee Barrera said, accountability and being transparent about where we need to go. You can't close the achievement gap if you're not honest with yourself about how students are doing. So continuing, looking at clear multiple measures of achievement, and then looking at some additional data points that will inform how we're doing in closing the achievement gap, and looking at it, triangulating it, and looking at it from different, through different lenses. Of course, the early learning and the pre-K for all is another area in which we will, we will need to continue the focus and expand that because we know early learning is the first pathway towards closing the achievement gap. Achievement gap doesn't even open if you keep it closed from the beginning and you give students high-quality early learning. Another key area, the second one, is the access to a broad and challenging curriculum. We know that across our schools, our families choose our schools and stay in our schools when we offer a robust offering. And broad and challenging curriculum includes having world languages and making sure that our world language plan, we know it's a highly desirable program, and we know that we're working on a cluster alignment of those language pathways and seeing instead of language pathways cropping up in different areas where there happened to be a need, we're making sure there's clearly articulated language pathways to ensure part of our commitment is that our students are fluent in two languages. And that only happens through coordinated district cluster planning alignment, and to make sure that there's a pathway that goes from elementary all the way through high school. And I want to say thank you to the entire team that works on that, and Julie Martell is helping to lead that effort around the alignment. But it takes several different divisions working on, on the vision for broad and challenging curriculum with language being at one of the center pieces of that. Of course, community and civic engagement, making sure that that's central to the way we offer broad and challenging curriculum and the way we're engaging our ASB students, and making sure that student governance, and having you up here on the dais is an example of that. Our civility awards, our civics lessons are all part of a broad and challenging curriculum so that we are creating conditions where all students leave our system actively literate, contributing, participating members of a global society. And that happens under this goal area of broad and challenging curriculum and what we'll focus on this year. Of course, we want to expand the elementary instrumental music program as well. Our third goal area is focusing on quality leadership, teaching and learning, and a key way that we do that in this year coming ahead is through relational leadership. We understand that our goal is to make sure we have school climates and classroom environments and environments for our teachers to learn and to grow that are based on true respect and making a commitment to the respect of the professional educators and the teams that are working together. We believe in, in entering into what we call humble inquiry, principals sitting alongside teachers and developing best practices and improving our craft. We are excited about our partnership with SDEA, and what we're looking at for our teacher growth and development model is based on trust, and it's based on respect. And it's been a year in the making with a committee that has already started, and now it's taking it to another, another level of piloting it. And our goal is to ensure that our educators are having opportunities to grow and to develop, and that happens through relational trust inside the work of the district. Quality leadership, teaching, and learning is also happening through our teacher pipeline effort. I think that our goals here are incredibly important and more complicated and difficult to achieve than I think I even imagined, or many of us had expected or imagined. Our goal is to ensure that our educators represent the students and families that they serve, and it's, it's challenging. So it's, we will redouble our efforts this year. We've seen some progress, and we need to see more in this area. And we will continue our commitment, and it's going to require us to be more creative, more innovative. The simple solutions that we thought may have gotten us further in the teacher pipeline initiative were enough to get started, but it's going to require further commitment and further creativity, both with internal and external stakeholders, to move forward with the teacher pipeline goals that we hold to be very important. Next goal area is positive school environments, climate, culture, equity at the core. This is about supporting the whole child. You heard me speak earlier in the year about our integrated student support services and how important that is. Our focus in this area is being a restorative district. What does that mean to have a district that understands equity, that meets each and every child where he or she is on their own learning continuum? And we're moving into a cycle this year in order to deliver on positive school environments as we're asking ourselves in inquiry mode. We work on inquiry, and we work on being able to be reflective. We're asking ourselves, what do we do when students aren't learning? And when students aren't learning, there might be many reasons why, and it's never the student's fault. It's always about us understanding the gifts, the strengths, the talents, the abilities, the genius that is there for us to unlock. And when a student isn't learning, why is that happening? And what can we do through integrated support services plan to support the whole child? And there's not one answer for each child. There are no silver bullets. There are no easy answers, but we're going to stay with it because we understand that the positive school environment lives inside a culture of a school that believes not some children, not some days, but all children, all days, can learn and can learn at high levels when they're given the kinds of supportive academic, social, physical environments that unlocks the genius. And we, we look students in the eye and we say, we believe in you. We know you have a gift to give. We know that you have a strength and an ability, and it's our job to allow that to come out. And are we creating those, those conditions for you? And when students know that adults believe in them, and that we've planned lessons that are best to meet their needs, and learning happens in really powerful ways. So integrated student support services is going to help us answer that question. What are we doing when students aren't learning? And we're launching that inquiry in November. I want to point out the student discipline data. We've made progress on suspensions and attendance. Those are key indicators of how school climate is going and what, what the culture of the school might feel like. We're going to go a little bit deeper. Suspensions and expulsions give us, or suspensions and attendance gives us a window. We would also like to look at our discipline referrals. Referrals happen at the school level, referrals from a classroom, and just begin to collect that information. And what is that telling us? Are there patterns? Are there trends? What are the reasons why students are being referred for support from a disciplinary perspective? And once we understand some of those reasons, we can activate the kinds of student support networks that might be needed through integrated services around, our goal is keeping students in the classroom learning. And when they're not, we want to understand, better understand why. So we'll go deeper with that and our commitment to culture, school culture and equity. The next area is a key focus area, and tonight's Vision 2020 update will be all about that. That's the next item coming up. Our new executive director of family and community engages, engagement, Stan Angen, will be doing a presentation. But we all know that high-quality public schools in Vision 2020 will, aren't, it's not possible to achieve without significant family and community engagement. And what does that look like? How will we approach that? So we have our neighborhood enrollment plan, and we have the family engagement team that will be presenting tonight, so you'll hear more about that. I won't spend time now because that's the focus of tonight's update, but it's a key factor and a key component in how we'll get our work accomplished as a district. And then finally, our sixth goal area is well-orchestrated district-wide support services and communications. And one of the things, I don't know if you noticed, as I went through each one of the slides, the top right corner is a little logo, and a logo represents the goal area. And each of these goal areas, we're calling them badges. And what we'd like to do this year is begin to lift up these six areas. When people ask us, I know, Dr. Mike, you always talk about, you're all over the state, and people say, what are you doing in San Diego? How are you doing it? We want to be able to articulate how we're doing what we're doing. Trustee Barrera just said, we're doing it with a focus on, on accountability, with a focus on equity, and a focus on building capacity. You can articulate that, but are we able to articulate to our community these six goal areas? We're closing the achievement gap. We have a broad and challenging curriculum. We focus on quality teaching and learning, safe supportive school environments, and family and community engagement. And now we're communicating that, both internally and externally. And this, this orchestrating these services, we want to put badges in place so schools that are making progress in each of these goal areas will be able to, I don't know if we're calling it apply for, what we're going to do this year is work on a system, and we'll prototype these badges. And we want to work collaboratively in pilot areas where some schools will talk to us about what does it look like to be doing really well in goal area one, closing the achievement gap, and earn the badge for your school. And we want to build that process out because it helps to articulate how we're coordinating support services to achieve these first five areas. And when the first five areas are done, and they're coordinated well in the sixth area through high-quality public engagement, we will, in fact, deliver on the sacred hope and promise of public education in America, and we'll do it right here in San Diego Unified.
Well done. Comments, questions? Yes.
So I just want to say, you touched base on learning a second language and being fluent in it. And I know at Mission Bay, we do the biliteracy test and things like that. I just want to say that it's really hard to learn a second language. From when I went to elementary school, we had it once a week for about an hour. And then through middle school, you had an option to do music or a second language. And now they have it to where you would have to have an extra period on your schedule in order to take a second language and a music class. And a problem in my high school, or something I have a concern about, is that our teachers that teach the second language, they are, they were raised fluent in that language, and it's really hard for me as an English speaker to be able to make that connection with the words when maybe they don't know how to say it in English to make us understand the second language. So I just think that if everybody was required to take a second language throughout all their years, that they would have higher biliteracy rates and be bilingual by the time they graduate. And I feel that that's really important in the world to have a job and be bilingual.
Thank you. Thank you for that feedback.
I just think, a comment, I think those are, those are really good points that you're raising, and one of the things we said in Vision 2020 is that we want our students to graduate with the ability to communicate well in two languages. And as you pointed out, taking a class doesn't necessarily mean that the person's going to become fluent in another language. If you have an hour a week in elementary school and so forth, and obviously, the earlier you get started, the better you will do in terms of learning a language. So I think it's really important. So I think it's really important. Superintendent Martin is working on this goal because we really need to have, it's not just a matter of we have this course or this course, but really a master plan for how can all of our students become fluent in another language. And I really believe, we talked about biliteracy, but I'm sure with the vast number of students that we have coming from families that originate from other countries and other languages, that we're going to end up with a lot of trilingual students because the students will come, they know their home language, they've mastered English, and I'm sure many of them are going to go on to earn another one. But I, I really appreciate the concerns you have about how language instruction has happened up to this point.
Excellent. Great comment. Thank you. Any others?
That's a vote for dual emerge.
I'm really excited about the work we have planned ahead. Of course, like I said, much more is in the LCAP, but these are the high-level goals and the ways that we plan to accomplish these goals in the year ahead. And as I said last week, I am more inspired than ever before about what we have accomplished and what is yet to come.
So that's the direction for the year. So we, item D. Are there any actions to report on?
There are none.
Superintendent, are there any administrative assignments reported?
Yes, President McQuarrie, I have two management appointments. Vice Principal of the Home Hospital Transition Support, Jennifer Hunt, and Principal on Special Assignment for Family and Community Engagement, Olga Venegas.
Well, this is the time for ASB representatives to introduce themselves. And it looks like we lost Ms. Muckus, who was representing, she's ASB president from Point Loma High School. But we do have Laura Barton, who is from my area, from Mission Bay High, and she also is the ASB council president. So tell us a little bit about the council and about what's happening at Mission Bay. Thank you for being part of this discussion.
Thank you. So my name is Laura, as Mr. McQuarrie said. I'm the ASB president of Mission Bay High School. And at our first district meeting for the Council of ASB Presidents, I was elected president of the San Diego Unified School District Council of ASB Presidents. I will be attending most of these meetings, but not all of them because council voted to allow 25 high school ASB presidents the opportunity to serve as a student representative. At our first ASB Presidents' Meeting, we discussed the purpose of student equity ambassadors and we, as ASB Presidents, are now surveying our sites for the right students to serve as a student equity ambassadors. We also discussed the expectations of an ASB class, ASB events, and reflected on the ASB card sales. Currently in our ASB class, our number one priority is the homecoming halftime show, pep rally and homecoming dance. At our pep rally, we have the honor of revealing our brand-new mascot to the school and to go along with our vintage theme. The dance name is Out with the New, In with the Old. And the next month promises to be super busy as we prepare for homecoming and we are really looking forward to it.
Thank you. Superintendent Martin, please provide your information report.
Thank you, President McQuarrie. I have two items I want to put in my information report to make sure that, we've communicated this already in multiple venues, but our choice window for choice enrollment is opening on October 3rd, next Monday. The six-week window opens October 3rd. It'll close on November 14th. And it is an adjustment in the date, so we want to make sure that we are making sure everyone knows about the new change. So I wanted to put in my report tonight. I just wanted to let you know that last year in our choice application enrollment program, we had 13,000 choice applications. It's a strong sign of how many quality school options we actually do offer in our district. But best of all, out of the 13,000 choice applications, 80% of all the applicants got their first choice. That's a real testament, I believe, to the hard work of Marceline Marquez and her team in our enrollment options office. Marceline helped us open our family and welcome enrollment center just this past August. And since we opened in August, the grand opening, we've had, already served 3,000 families, 1,200 walk-ins, 1,000 phone inquiries and over 1,000 email inquiries. So I want to just remind everyone that all of the families who might be thinking about the choice program, first of all, please check out your neighborhood school first and go visit it. Make sure you have a tour, ask to see the principal. Our neighborhood schools are amazing. And if you'd like to then, after you do that, if you decide you want to apply for the choice program, the family welcome and enrollment center staff is, of course, available to answer any of your questions. They're open Monday through Friday from 8 to 5 and we have staff that can help in English, Spanish and French. Also want to remind, so the window closes on November 14th. There is one important exception. I had some questions about this this week, students that are new to the district. Of course, the window closes November 14th, but if you're new to the district, any new family, including our military families new to the district or coming from charter schools, they can apply for the choice program at any time throughout the school year. So I wanted to clarify that. The new six-week application window that folks are talking about, it's, I wanted to also explain why we changed the date. It puts us in alignment with the other large school districts and the other neighboring San Diego County school districts for their choice programs as well. It also provides our families and our school sites time to plan for the year ahead with the earlier option. And we've advertised this across the district. We have banners outside the enrollment office. We have the dates and times on the principal's page. We email the principals and the letters are going out to the school communities on the websites, TV. So we're trying to spread the word in as many venues as we possibly can and hopefully you can help do that as well to make sure that everyone knows what the new enrollment is. And we have the catalogs going online on October 3rd in multiple language, including Spanish, Tagalog, Vietnamese and Somali. My second announcement, very exciting, is something that was referenced earlier, is looking ahead this week on Thursday, I just want to put it in context that our schools and public school systems oftentimes are called upon to solve problems, societal, larger problems that are not necessarily even ours of the making. We know that we have students who are facing poverty and other challenges that have not been created necessarily by the school system, and yet the schools and the communities look to us to solve them. And so our approach as our district has always been to take on these challenges head-on and to face them. And so we're planning to do that. Starting this Thursday, we're going to face a very difficult issue together as a community, the issue of race. And we know the issue of race in our society right now, that there are very difficult times in our nation when it comes to race and the conversations that we're hearing. So this Thursday, we'll be launching our new coalition of educators and partners that will work together to leverage the knowledge, the networks, the talent, right here in our community that will ensure that each and every student is college, career and community-ready. We're going to have this equity conversation, you referenced it, the Student Equity Coalition coming up on Thursday. And after the first meeting this Thursday evening, I certainly will have more to report back, but we're very excited about this new coalition that will be starting this Thursday to have this conversation and invite multiple stakeholders to continue not just a conversation, but action with results, as I've always done and will always continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to board information reports, we normally would start with our right with trustee Beiser, are you able to log on?
I have nothing to report.
Got it. Trustee Barrera. Trustee Evans?
Okay, I have two minutes. I'm going to give the history of the San Diego Unified School District in two minutes. In Vision 2020, we talk about critical thinking. We talk about literacy and numeracy. We talk about educating the whole child, you know, emotionally, physically and appreciation for the arts. We think this is all very new, but it's really been the goal of public education all along. And so if you look right here, we can see there was a celebration of 100 years of San Diego Unified School District in 1953. Here's one of the first schools that Lee Dolgoreoff built without air conditioning quite a while ago. And if you look right here, you can see that the first thing they talked about, teaching basic skills, literacy and numeracy and so forth, which are very important. The next point, back in 1953, to produce critical thinkers, not just robotic learners, but people who can actually learn to think, to sift through information, to make a more literate and a better society. And then if we go on here, we look, the next point they made was to have good human relationships by teaching important values of being intelligent, responsible citizens. And I think if you even look at that, you can see, which is kind of surprising to me, in 1953, the diversity that was actually represented at that point in the San Diego Unified School District. And then going from there to develop physical and emotional health, we've certainly been working on athletic facilities and playgrounds and all that kind of stuff under Vision 2020, which has always been a very important thing. And finally, for a deeper appreciation of the arts with our VAPA program and so forth. So you can see, this was, they were looking at the schools from 1853 to 1953. And in 2016, we have some of the very same goals. It's really, we're not reinventing the wheel with Vision 2020. We are actually just putting into practice what have always been the goals of public education in the United States. And that was in under two minutes.
Trustee Sharon, your space.
And I simply want to say thank you to community partners who have been donating money, $10,000, I think it was, from Ashford University for backpacks at Horton, $10,000 for golf course privileges for our municipal golf course. And just, just the support that we're getting from community partners throughout the district, I just want to say thank you to them. And I think we had some wonderful open houses and I was at Lincoln's yesterday, the PTO meeting. And I'm just really pleased that, how the community is rallying to support our schools and what's happening in the schools.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a thrill to share that moment with you, to see students get their backpacks. I also wanted to call out community partners at Adams. We had a $100,000 project going with, with a program that was through the American Heart Association where we're going to be distributing education and teaching students how to do CPR. And it was rolled out with supervisor Ron Roberts, so it's a partner with our nonprofits and with our county office. In addition, I want to comment about our other partners that we're working with, with our 17,000 students of military families. So I met with the new general, General Kelly out at Camp Pendleton and with our military liaisons and we talked about what are we doing and what are we doing well, shared best practices and what do we want to do this year in the future. But it's comforting to know that our partners do include the military and the military liaisons that are in each of our, in our schools that are highly impacted with students who are from military families. We want to make sure that when they come, they arrived and are welcomed, they have programs that are ready for them and that we are supportive of them and they provide the services that help us to encourage and to ensure that these students also have a high-quality education and have their needs met.
President McQuarrie, I just want to point out, nobody heard a buzzer, but one of the things we decided at our last governance meeting was that when we do the board information reports, there was a two-minute limit. So if you saw the green light and the yellow light.
I didn't see the green light. How did I do?
Which is why I was speaking very quickly. But we have our public speakers who come in and they either have one or two or three minutes, so we wanted to model that we can actually do it. But nobody heard the buzzer because everybody finished before the two minutes.
Oh, I was within my limit.
You would have heard a buzzer if you kept going.
Oh, all right. Well, and that came out of comments from our public, a comment was that we were really going on too long about things that might have been important to us, but necessarily important for moving the conversation forward. So we decided to do two minutes and if we can't get it set in two minutes, we shouldn't go there. Anyway, that completes the reports. Moving on to E1, we have the focus goals initiatives for 2016-17.
Already did that.
We did?
That was me.
That was you. Did I turn the page? Oh, no, we moved that forward.
Item heard in the meeting, so now you read this one.
So we will now hear item E2. You guys are so kind. Vision 2020, quality schools in every neighborhood, and this report on the family and community engagement, the LCAP Goal 5. Superintendent Martin and Mr. Anjan, please present the item.
Thank you, President McQuarrie. I'm inviting our executive director of family and community engagement, Mr. Anjin, up to the dais to help present this item. But first, let me put this in context. We do a monthly superintendent, or Vision 2020 update where the six goal areas that I just talked about for the year, now we're going to get started. Our plan for family and community engagement actually was worked on for an entire year last year. As you may remember, the team worked on it. You heard multiple updates throughout the year. We set forth a vision, we put forth a framework. The board in public meetings received two information reports on the redesign of family and community engagement, the December 2015 board report. And in April 2016, we talked about what this year would have in store. So now it's finally here. And Mr. Anjin has been on the job for just a little under, a little over a couple of months, seven weeks, okay? And he is going to talk about what this work will look like this year. And although Mr. Anjin is presenting tonight, he is with an entire community of people, meeting with folks, meeting with our stakeholder groups, having conversations. It's not like a baked plan that now here it's going to go and get done. It happens in community. That's the definition of the work that he does. And so it's really important that we get to hear now how LCAP Goal 5 is going to be imagined and the work is being launched. So with that, I'll let Mr. Anjin begin and welcome to the dais. It's nice to have you up here.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here as the first cabinet-level member focused on family and community engagement. This is not a new passion for me. As one of my best moments of my career was engaging families, almost 5,000 of them, in a year-long process to educate and help them become active members of their education, of their child's education. And it's obvious by the work that you've done over the course of the last few years that we have also a passion here for family and community engagement. So we've mentioned multiple times that the journey for family and community engagement work at the district started with the 2020 vision, Vision 4, around parents and community members engaged in learning. And then transitioned to the 12 indicators, which led to the LCAP Goal 5, parent and community engagement with highly regarded neighborhood schools that serve students, families and communities. And so, as Ms. Martin mentioned earlier, last year, you guys ventured into this journey of looking at what family and community engagement could look like based on the, one of the founding frameworks, which was the U.S. Department of Education's Dual Capacity Building Framework for Family-School Partnerships, which led us to a space where we engaged multiple partners and stakeholders in the development of what could be a systemic framework for family engagement focused in four areas, which was collecting data around family engagement, growing family networks and leadership, utilizing the design thinking to build trust and take action and empowering families and schools with high-impact home strategies. And so in this work that you guys have been culminating and doing, as Ms. Martin mentioned earlier, came in alignment with the learning cycles that our school staff and administrators have been engaged in doing. And so in identifying high-impact home strategies that would align with the work that our schools are doing to build a stronger home and school connection. And so as Ms. Martin mentioned earlier, I've been on the job now seven weeks and there's been a lot of time spent with what she also mentioned earlier, which is our inquiry, the humble inquiry, which is asking questions to get a better sense of what we are doing, how we are doing it and what we can do better to service the families so that we are giving them what they need when they need it. And so one of the key pieces of the work that I've been doing in the last few weeks has been to look at all of the cross-district family and community engagement supports that we currently have on the ground focused on supporting families. And at this time, I have identified over 21 different departments or programs that service our parents and our families, which is phenomenal. And so looking at how we are accessing them and giving them these resources on a constant basis. For example, we have the enrollment options in neighborhood schools department, which we've mentioned already today in providing the opportunity for families to have choice. Alongside that, has spent a lot of time looking at the engagement with our community partners and have spent time meeting with them at their community organization offices, have spent time driving into the communities where our children live to see what the environments are like for them and what services they have. are like for them and what services they have, and have spent some time really looking at internally what, how our parents are currently servicing as voices for the large-scale work that we have ahead. And so, really being reflective in what we do and how we do it to ensure that we are not leaving any voices out in this work that we have ahead of us. So, another aspect of this work that has been done has been really looking at the facilities and the spaces where our families are engaging in this work. And so that is Ballard Center. And with stakeholders, have spent time looking at the facilities and what we would propose as some upgrades to ensure that our environments are worthy of families, and that the spaces that we bring our parents to come and learn are also spaces that we engage them to have a voice in how we can make them better. So there are a few things that we have proposed as a collective to see how we can ensure that the learning happens in a space where all people are constantly engaged. So, the work has also led me into the instructional cabinet, and that's fantastic because I also have a strong passion for instruction. But through the collective efforts, we've identified five key instructional priorities. One of, tier-one instruction, highly effective school leaders, multiple tiers of support for students, high-quality individual education plans, and the fifth priority being family and community engagement. And with the collective efforts in that work, we have developed four equity levers, ensuring that we are, again, bringing equity at the forefront of the work we do. And that is that families are co-teachers and co-learners in students. And there was a strong effort to create and look at all of the things that we have been doing and all of the services that we have, and then really identify what the vision is for this work. And so, for each equity lever, we have developed a belief statement that will kind of move this work forward, ensuring that we know exactly who we are and what our beliefs are around family engagement. And so I'd like to read these to you because I think they're very powerful. And that is, for families as co-teachers and co-learners, we believe families and schools are valued and trusted partners who share in the commitment to and responsibility of educating our children. For families as co-leaders, we believe that positive relationships between families and schools serve to strengthen our collective leadership for the betterment of the community. With environments worthy of families, we believe that our schools and district environments are welcoming, organized, safe, and attractive, that serve as neighborhood centers for families to gather, collaborate, and learn together. And for community-school partnerships, we believe families, schools, and community organizations engage, connect, and use partnerships to design and take action on outcomes that benefit our children. So there's been a lot of inquiry and learning around what we're doing and how we're doing, and I think this work leads us to have a foundation moving forward in what our true beliefs are around the engagement of parents and community members in how we move forward with the work ahead. So, in our effort to strengthen family and community engagement across the district, we looked at identifying spaces where our team can also service the community in a much more strategic way. And so we will be looking at placing our family and community engagement team members in middle schools across each one of the areas so that they have access to supporting all of the schools in this building capacity and organizing effort. And so we want to ensure that there's access to all schools all the time. We've created a timeline that has been basically set forth to really have some, I think, high impact on our community and engagement. So we've developed these belief statements, and now are looking at how we will engage our stakeholders in the future. And through this engagement process, we will begin dialoguing on a plan of action in ways that we can collaborate and move forward in the work. And so, it started in September 8th with the first family and community engagement event at Lincoln High School with Pedro Noguera. And that was highly successful from the parent comments we heard at the last board meeting and from the, from the message that he shared about partnership and the work we can do together in this collective effort. We're looking at and have been engaging all of our stakeholders in this process and learning together about where we can move forward. And in the next few weeks, we will hold a Family and Community Engagement District Summit so that we can bring all of these different departments and programs together to start working in alignment and integration, and ensuring that we all have the same messaging around what family and community engagement is, as well as launching our family and community engagement resource teachers out to really start building relationships with our teachers, administrators, and parent, as well as community organizations. We hope in December to have a Family and Community Engagement Breakfast where we bring partners to the table to have some dialogue and start thinking about how we can, again, collectively start supporting our schools in an effort to strengthen our students. And we look at hosting what will be a first Family and Community Engagement University Day where we are accessing, are giving access to our families, to a university, to have that hands-on experience on what it looks like to be college and career-ready, as well as moving with a parent survey towards the end of the year to start collecting some data around what parents and families, as well as community members, feel about the schools to give us a better sense of where we need to grow. And then closing, I think it's always great to celebrate, and one thing that came to our attention in this work has been that we have, we need to look at celebrating our families and our community members who engage in this work with us as partners, and so launching our first Family and Community Engagement Awards at the end of the year in a celebratory manner for the work that we have accomplished and look to accomplish in the future. So that kind of leads us where we are at this moment, in that the plan of action is to get out into the community and engage and start working on a plan on how we do this together and in true partnership. And so I am now left with any questions or comments?
Before we have comments, the board, we have two speakers, and then we can, if there's Francine Maxwell and Celeste Babrick Ozaki.
Sorry, I have six minutes left of battery life on my laptop, so. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Les Babrick Ozaki. I'm the president for the San Diego Unified Council PTAs. The PTA's mission is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. I have had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Anjan as a duly representative of a significant community-level stakeholder in the area of family and community engagement. I have had, I have also had the opportunity to review the presentation regarding the work that he has begun as the new Executive Director of Family and Community Engagement. Overall, I am cautiously encouraged by the progress, but I can't deny that there is still significant work to be done before we start to see significant impact on student learning outcomes. The timeline is aggressive, but not impossible. I am personally a firm believer that public education can work for all. The landscape of public education has seen a significant shift in recent years with the implementation of LCFF, LCAP in California, and the new Every Student Succeeds Act at the federal level. Family and community engagement is at the forefront of many conversations, and I see that the role of San Unified Council PTA ties into almost all, almost all of the belief statements that were presented. The question that remains in my mind, are there enough access to resources for the Family and Community Engagement Department to build capacity for authentic family and community engagement at a systemic district level? The opportunities for seeing that tangible success is available, it remains to be seen that it will be a reality. On a personal note, one of the things that jazzed me the most in his presentation was the proposal to upgrade Ballard Center. If you don't know already, that is the home for the San Diego Unified Council PTA. So I've been going there not only at the parent, getting parent education for myself, but also evolving at the community-level leader. So for the people that are sitting there behind me, I know them as well, so it would be an absolute dream to be able to see that Ballard Center upgraded because it will be a way of saying thank you to the wonderful work that they have done for many years for our family in San Diego. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Celeste. Yeah, thank you and the PTA for the work that you do, the volunteer hours that you provide. Board comments, questions? Let's start on, trustee Sharon?
I would just like to say that I'm really excited about this. I think you've captured the essence of what we're interested in, and I like the idea that you're getting out in the field and you're actually visiting the communities. And I'm really impressed and excited about this. I just wish you well with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I echo Sharon's comments. I really, Stan, I really appreciate the way that you've begun this work, and it's familiar, your approach is familiar, you know, to community organizers because you're basically asset-mapping, you're going inside, you know, the district, and then you're going outside to the community organizations, and you're, you know, you're pulling together and you're planning and understanding of, you know, the resources that are currently available and have always been available to our parents if we can figure out how to, you know, coordinate them and make them more accessible. So I really, I appreciate, and I appreciate that, you know, you're focused on, you know, consistent with what we were talking about with the superintendent, how do you build infrastructure? How do you build systems that, you know, are going to allow us to go out and make progress over time? And we know that the goal that we set out, you know, around this work a couple of years ago, is an enormous and really unprecedented challenge, certainly in this school district, and I believe in any school district. And that challenge is, how do we support and build the capacity and the confidence of every parent to successfully, you know, support the learning of their students? And we've identified, you know, the high-impact strategies, and so ultimately, the success of, you know, this project is not simply about, you know, what we can do and kind of, you know, scattered efforts here and there. It's how do we get out to tens of thousands of parents? And how do we know, you know, that we're, that we're making progress and that those parents feel that they're, you know, building their own capacity to work with their students? So what, what we've all done and imagined is, you know, taking the work and the, kind of, these core principles of Cindy's leadership style, transparency and accountability, capacity building, and a focus on equity, that has, you know, has been focused on how do we, within the district, you know, get better at what we do and create better outcomes for students? So we're taking that set of strategies now outside. And as Superintendent Martin just talked about in terms of the creation of the new Equity Group, we're committing ourselves and we're making a statement that the circumstances that face our students outside of school are our responsibility, which is, again, you know, an incredible challenge and incredible concept, I think, for a school district. I think we've always known that, you know, the circumstances that students face outside of schools has a big impact in how well they're able to do at school. But I think traditionally, the public school system has said, but that's somebody else's job, or that's not, you know, how can we possibly take that work on? And now we're saying we're ready to take that work on, and we're ready to take that work on with tens of thousands of families in our district. So I think what you're doing is, you're putting the time and the effort in on an early, you know, at an early point in this project to understand the resources that are available to us to, you know, get out and build those relationships with the community partners and the partners, you know, inside the district. Because we know that that foundation and that infrastructure has to be so incredibly strong, you know, for us to actually meet this challenge of supporting tens of thousands of parents. So, you know, very, very much appreciated, and I'm sure, you know, Lee and Dan and everybody over there are gearing up to get the Ballard Center to a point that, you know, Celeste is excited about. It's a smart move to get that into your power.
So it's a, it's a challenge, it's a high priority. We need clear action, and I know the community wants to build trust, communication, and the opportunity to see someone who will make a difference, that'll pull our perquins forward. We know if we want to have quality schools in our neighborhoods, we need to have quality neighborhoods around our schools, and that means to have active and engaged community and parents. And I know that you're out there because I see you. I'm at a lot of events, and I'm beginning to see you at many of the events that I am attending, and I want to thank you for being at Camp Pendleton there to support our military families and their children. So thank you and good luck, and we wish you well, and welcome aboard. Yeah, Mr. Evans?
Yes. Yeah, well, welcome aboard also, and I want to also congratulate you for not reading every word of the PowerPoint. You did a very good presentation. I don't know if you were prepped by someone on that?
But we did say he had to read the belief statements because they're very powerful. That was intentional.
That was appropriate. No, absolutely, but not every single word. And this whole task that you're taking on, I mean, it's monumental, really, what we're talking about here. I mean, we always pay lip service to, you know, parents are very important, and, you know, so you should show up at the PTA meeting, or you should go to the parent-teacher conference, and we have a certain, you know, small percentage of parents who are very, very involved in these activities. And one of the things we said to the superintendent, as Richard was pointing out a couple of years ago, was, you know, we had done a really good job of engaging the activist parents, that the people who are involved knew what the district is doing and where we're going and why we were doing it, and that was, that was an excellent step forward. But what about all of the others? The vast majority of the parents who do not know about district politics, who do not know about even some particular specifics about their school? And that's who we wanted to have engaged. And it's, it's a, I say it's a monumental task because we're looking at it from the top in terms of going down, there's so much below, and then from the bottom up, it's another issue. But where are we trying to get to? And I think what, the picture I have is this model school, which really is thriving on parent and community engagement, where every, every parent is involved. And if there is a child who has a parent who is, for some reason, not able to be involved, and I would think that has to be a limited number of people, but then there needs to be an adult who is sponsoring and mentoring that student. So you either have a parent in the home, or a grandparent, or someone who's speaking up for you, or you have someone else who's taking on that role. But what would that be like? And this is, this goes across all socioeconomic groups. You know, people talk about some people have two jobs and can't participate. There are plenty of people who have, you know, very, one, very high-paying job and don't have time to participate with their kids. But, and it's a variety of things. I mean, it could be showing up in a meeting, but there's all other kinds of ways to connect through technology with everybody. And so, we have to really look at how do we reach every single parent and make sure that they're involved? Because ultimately, what our goal is that all of the parents feel ownership of the school. They're not just dropping off their kid there. And then we, and that's, and we talk about high expectations, we need to have much higher expectations of our parents, that we really expect them to be partners in this. And I know that at Central Elementary, they had Family Fridays, and they had probably a Dad's Club and things like that, where people were really, really involved. Because we could see tons of things going on across all the district, all kinds of events, different things are going on, wonderful opportunities, learning about universities and everything else, but what is happening with every single- But what is happening with every single kid and every single parent in terms of their being involved? And, you know, Paulo Freire, when he talked about literacy, you know, it wasn't just about learning to read and write, it was being able to act upon the world. And do our parents really feel that they have an active and important role in their child's education? And so, as I said, I think it's, you've got a great start. It's a very monumental task, but, and the only way I can sort of picture is almost having a few model schools and saying, okay, with these schools, we're going to, you know, put a lot of effort into, you know, particularly high-need schools, and we're going to engage everybody and be very creative about how we engage everybody with whatever limitations they have. And then, and then to be able to measure and see what are the results in terms of community, what are the results in terms of student achievement when we have this super-high parent and community participation in school? So, that's a lofty goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, moving on to item F. I know we have some speakers on F5, and trustee Sharon Whitehurst-Payne, you had a comment you wanted to make on one of the items?
Yes.
So, do you want to take a motion to?
[inaudible].
Okay, so let's take a motion to, on the consent agenda with comments?
Yeah, I'll say it.
And then we'll go for discussion. Okay, moved in second, and let's start with our, we have speaker Joanne Fields on F5.
What is this?
She wanted to speak in support of our Filipino-American month. Absolutely exciting to do that and to acknowledge our Filipino communities. Trustee Whitehurst-Payne, did you have one you wanted to?
I just wanted to make some comments on the F3, Recognizing National Bullying Prevention Month.
Okay.
And basically, I'm really excited to see that schools, that every school is being charged with some kind of program to make students and families aware of the process involved if there is an issue, to inform them about the Quality Assurance Office, so that all of these, if there are any complaints, they can come in, and we don't get the nebulous, well, I'm not being treated fairly or whatever, but specifics. And I speak from 17 years of experience in this district of having investigated complaints for adults, and that's the way, they come in, you deal with them, and they move on so that we don't get this, well, we have a collective complaint. No, individuals, you file, the data are summarized, and then you can, you have a practice there that you can address. But I'm just really happy to see that schools will be addressing this so that, so that we don't get that kind of response.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment because on this National Bullying Prevention Month, also for the next board meeting, trustee Whitehurst-Payne and I are bringing forth a resolution on civility, and she's talking about the reporting and how we deal with bullying and so forth, but we also need to look at the side of prevention. And it's interesting, this title here, National Bullying Prevention Month, because on the national stage, there is currently, it's become almost acceptable to be a bully in public forums, and this is the horrible example that's being set for our kids, and so we need to redouble our efforts for civility to replace bullying.
So, that resolution will be presented the next?
At the next board meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's, we've moved in second, so cast your vote, and, I don't hear from, and Mr. Viser? Yeah, your name?
I vote yes, aye.
Cool, we got it. We got it recorded?
Yes.
President McCallum, move item H1.
Item H1 has been moved?
Second.
It's been seconded. And we have no H1. This is the determination that Miramesa High School Stadium and Athletic Facility Improvement Project is exempt from further environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines Sections 15301, 15302, and 15314. An approval of Miramesa High School Stadium and Athletic Facilities Improvement Project. We have a motion in the second. Any staff presentations? No? Any, and we have no speakers? Any comments with board? If not, cast your vote. And trustee Viser acknowledged?
I vote yes.
Got it.
I'll move item H2.
H2 has been moved.
I'll second item H2.
I think you got beat by trustee Evans. So, we'll now hear that H2 Resolution Approving California Environmental Quality Act SEQA Addendum Number One to Final Initial Study, Mitigated Negative Declarations for the Oferal Community School Modernization and New High School Facility Project, and Approval of Project Changes and Making the Related Findings. We have no speakers. Are we have any board comments? Cast your vote, and trustee Viser acknowledge your vote.
I vote aye, yes.
Aye, I hear that. It's all recorded, it's unanimous. And we have other speaker? So, so we, this evening, we have, so we had no items pulled from item aye, so we're moving to non-agenda speakers. We have Joseph Steinberger, if he's in the room, going once. Steinberger two, talk about Crown Point. Steinberger three, closed. That concludes the agenda. The next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 4th, 2016. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, Kevin. Feed the dog.
Thank you, guys. Great job.